Good afternoon, welcome to council meeting of October the 6th. This hybrid meeting is being held in person here in council chambers and electronically in accordance with section two three eight, subsection three point three of the municipal act and section sixteen point six point two four of the city of Woodstock procedure by law. This meeting is being live streamed to the city's YouTube channel and a record recording will be posted on the city's website following the meeting. The meeting will also be broadcast on Rogers TV. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas meetings in minutes page of the city website. Counselors attending virtually will be raising their hands in view of their webcam when moving a motion requesting to speak and when the vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor attending virtually needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerk. Councillor Tate will be reading the resolutions. We have no closed session today and the is there any disclosure of conflict of interest? None matters arising from the minutes. The minutes councillor Tate.
Moved by myself seconded by councillor Petter that the minutes of the regular meeting of the Woodstock City Council held on September fifteenth twenty twenty two be adopted.
Thank you, are there any questions? Thank you, call the vote on that, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. The September fifteenth twenty twenty two regular council meeting additions to the agenda. Are there any, there's no additions today? And no presentations at this time. The consideration of planning reports. The first one is a request for extension of draft approved plan of subdivision thirty two T dash oh eight oh oh three Lunar Group Inc. Could I have a motion on this please councillor Schadenberg and second or please? Councillor Petter? Would you like to read the motion please?
Yes, the Woodstock City Council supports a three year extension to the draft approval of the Lunar Group subdivision thirty two T dash zero eight zero zero three. For lands described as part of lots fourteen and fifteen concession one Blandford in the city of Woodstock to October the thirty first twenty twenty five as set out in the report CP twenty twenty two dash three six two.
I'd like the city planner, would you like to speak to this? Plan?
Thank you, this is just an extension to an existing subdivision. Originally approved in two thousand and nine, there's been a number of approvals or renewals since then. However, they have registered five phases since the original approval and are working on the sixth registration. So staff recommend approval for the three year extension.
Thank you, are there any questions through for the planner? Hearing none, I'll call motion, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. A consideration of correspondence, the Woodstock Public Library Board legacy document twenty twenty two. Could I have a motion on that councillor Tate and second or please? Councillor Accioni, councillor Tate.
Y'all make the motion that's received as information.
Thank you, are there any questions on that councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any questions from the chair, but I'd certainly like to make a couple of comments. It looks like it's a nice way of sort of saying five years ago, they did a master plan. And now five years later, they come back and do their report card on on their master plan, their game plan. And I do like the fact that part of their diversity and inclusion, a section of their report mentions that they provided the Ryan Douths homeless training course for library staff in twenty twenty two. Provided truth and reconciliation training for library staff in twenty twenty two. Initiated a fine free library service in twenty twenty one. And the other one being that I'm on the accessibility committee is they added an additional automatic door opener, the front door in twenty twenty two. So I do like the fact that it's a bit of a self analysis done by the library board on on their good works and good efforts to to follow up on something sort of promised to do.
Councillor Tate? Yes, through the chair, so councillor Lauter and I sit on that board and I just want to recognize as councillor Schadenberg said about them doing their work. We've got a very good board, all our advisory boards are good, this one's been a handful this year with a lot of work that we've done. And I just want to recognize Brian Crockett, Mary Ann Silverthorne, Gary Wade and Ken Whitebird, they're on our board. It's been a lot of work, we're very thankful that people of Woodstock put their name forward and the quality of people we get for these boards, so thank you.
Thank you for that, and yes, this is a very active board and we have been very busy throughout this whole term. And a big thanks goes out to that committee. On the motion, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. The next item is Jocelyn Hayes, stopping harassment and abuse by local leaders act request for a letter of support. Could I have a motion on this please? Councillor Accioni?
Yes, thank you, moved by myself. Woodstock City Council expressed its support for bill five, stopping harassment and abuse by local leaders act, which would require the code of conduct for municipal councillors and members of local boards to include a requirement to comply with workplace violence and harassment policies and permit and permit municipalities and local boards to direct the integrity commissioner to apply to the courts to vacate a member seat if the commissioner inquiry determines that the member has contravened this requirement. And further that this resolution be circulated to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Steve Clark, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Honorable Stephen Blaise, Orleans MPP and the Honorable Ernie Hardman, Oxford MPP.
Thank you, could I have a second on that councillor Talbot? Is there any questions on that? Thank you.
I'll let councillor Accioni go first since he made the motion, then I'll speak to it.
Thank you, thank you, just really wanted to make this motion. It's no secret, we've had some issues around municipalities, not just us, but a few, obviously this is going through. We are held at a higher standard. My OPP stand background also taught you that, that you are expected a little bit higher than general public, which I believe this seat around this table is the exact same. So with that, I do, hopefully this will go somewhere, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tate.
Yes, through the chair, just along the same veins, I hope the material government takes this serious and takes a look at this right now. I know we've all stated this, but there's absolutely no mechanism to remove a councillor, whether they're charged, any kind of behavior, even if they were found guilty, you still can't remove a councillor in municipal politics, the only way to remove somebody is if they actually serve jail term. There's no police check done on any of the, when you run for municipal governments or if you get in. So I hope the government takes this serious because I think it's important that the taxpayers have recognition of what's going on and that their voices are heard too.
Thank you councillor Schadenberg.
Yeah, thanks a lot to Mayor Connie. I guess the thing I wanted to add is is if anybody looks at the correspondence that's noted on the agenda for today's meeting, they will notice that Woodstock would be following suit with other municipalities such as the city of Barry, of Wasaga Beach, town of New Du Combe and Springwater Township and others that have already sort of approved this motion and this idea. And it's one of the reasons why we do this in council is to sort of say, well, there's there's a big interest from the from the lower tiers to to get the upper tier, the provincial government in this case, to to move forward on something.
Are there any other comments? Thank you, I'll call the vote on that, all in favor? Thank you, that's passed unanimously. The next is councillor Accioni has requested the following correspondence be added to the agenda. Municipality of Gray Highlands Resolution to Lobby for Increased Speeding Fines, councillor Accioni.
Thank you. Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council supports the resolution from the municipality of Gray Highlands regarding increased speeding fines. And further that this resolution be circulated to municipality of Gray Highlands, the Association of Municipalities Ontario and Rural Ontario Municipal Association.
Thank you, could I have a second on that motion please? Councillor Schadenberg? A discussion please, councillor Accioni.
Thank you, through the chair. It's no secret here in the city with the growth we've experienced, we've had a lot of speeding complaints. One way to of course affect that is by everyone's pocketbook. The speeds are actually just unbelievable in some cases. Not only here in the city, but in rural as well. So I thought this was quite a general for the highway and you know fifty nine highway, highway two, highway nineteen, other ones I travel are kind of getting a little ridiculous, so I'm hoping they'll also take this one seriously and affect where it hurts people the most, and of course that's their pocketbook. Thank you.
Thank you, is there any other councillor Petter?
Through the chair, sorry Jerry, I want to speak against your motion. Two things, one, it's probably going to cost me money. But seriously, I the part of the article and part of the reasoning behind this was because of the non enforcement of the speed limit up to twenty kilometers over the speed limit. That to me is the problem. It's not the, it's not the amount of money that we're we're levying against the speeders, it's the non enforcement of the twenty kilometers over. And we all know it, the drive on the four oh one, if you're not doing twenty over, you're not keeping up. So I think that's the real problem, I don't think this is a is going to do anything, so I just can go against motion.
Is there any other discussion councillor Accioni?
Yes, thank you, through the chair to councillor Petter. I have a problem with that as well, I'm not going to lie, I think this is a good start though. With the police having troubles already trying to keep up with the amount of calls and everything, I give, this gives them a lot more tools to severely punish those exceeding that much, I guess. I apologize if you're affected by this, but proud to say, touch wood, in thirty years I haven't got a speeding ticket, so I'm going to jake myself now, I'm sure. But I do believe that this has got to be a start, so thank you.
Thank you, is there any other councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, thanks, this time a question from the mayor through either our CAO or maybe our treasurer on this one. Just to fully understand, because if the OPP gives you a speeding ticket is completely different than if you get a speeding ticket by the city Woodstock Police, Woodstock Police Services, based on where possibly that revenue could go. Because there's always a pressure at budget time to sort of say, well, let's go out and hire three or four more police officers to be simply traffic officers that might gain some extra revenue for the city of Woodstock. But that's not really the case, is it, if that if that were something we would do?
Madam Chairperson, through to councillor Schadenberg, that is the case. For any speeding ticket that's issued, whether it's in the city on the four oh one or in the geographic territory of Oxford, whether it's by Woodstock Police or OPP. The revenues that are derived from speeding ticket fines that are paid through the provincial offenses court reside with the county of Oxford. So the county is the operator of the local provincial offenses court. All of the municipalities in Oxford County benefit, I guess, through a reduction of the county levy by our percentage of which were responsible for the county levy. So the revenues do derive some benefit to each of us. And so, so but there is no direct correlation between an increase in speeding enforcement in the city and revenues directly for the city of Woodstock.
Any other discussion councillor Tate?
Yeah, just through the chair, just for the people watching, just the biggest issue is enforcement, we know that, the police know that, the problem is there's just not enough of them. And with all the other issues going on, the traffic is the last thing that gets looked at, which is unfortunate. We do, every municipality has the same problem, it's probably other than the bus complaint, the other number one is speeding. I have asked the city engineer to put up a sign, just as you come in on Van Av after where the cemetery is off the highway fifty nine, one of the blinking ones, but those signs are over ten thousand dollars, so they have to come to capital budget. So we will be getting one hopefully, but you can't put them up everywhere, it's too expensive. And sometimes people don't pay attention, but I will support the motion because I think even if you finally do get stopped, you got it, there's got to be a punishment, otherwise people are going to keep doing it.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, I have to call that again because the mic was not, all in favor of the vote? Thank you, and all opposed? Thank you, that is passed. Thank you. And the next one is the Oxford County twenty twenty four water and wastewater master plan municipal class environmental assessment study. Phase one and two, notice of public consultation center one, could I have a motion on that please? Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, I'll move that Woodstock City Council received the Oxford County two twenty twenty four water and wastewater master plan municipal class environmental assessment study, phase one and two, notice of public consultation center number one as information.
Thank you, could I have a second on that councillor Tate, is there any discussion on that? Councillor Schadenberg?
I just simply want to add, I guess that I thought was a very good idea that they took this on tour, so to speak, at the Tilsonburg Rib Fest and the Outdoor Canada Farm Show and other venues as well to be able to get input from people. I know, for example, when we did our recreation needs assessment study in the city of Woodstock, the consultants made a big effort to attend like the Wreck and Leisure Fair and other local events to help really, really make a sort of a coverage of all the people that may be missing through through participation online.
Thank you, is there any other discussion? I'll call the vote, all in favor of that motion? Thank you, that's passed unanimously. The next is a presentation by Andrea Sinclair and Eliza Opersku and that's MHBC Streetscape Master Plan recommendations, go ahead. Could you just stop for a minute, they're trying to check the sound out?
Yes.
Excuse me Chris, one more, when she, when the presentation is done, can we enlarge that on the screen?
Okay, hopefully you could hear me, my voice is loud enough for at least those in person, I don't know if anyone online heard that, but well, we're happy to be here today and to present the Streetscape Master Plan and the Vision for Museum Square. We also, Caitlin Hughes is another member of our team, she's in council today, she's not taking the microphone, but she's been a valuable member of our team. So the study area really was focused around the entirety of downtown Woodstock, but really focusing in on Dundas Street primarily and of course Museum Square. I won't read this verbatim, but essentially this project came out of the previous work that was done that identified a number of initiatives to basically make downtown a better place and to beautify the downtown, and one of them was to do the Streetscape Master Plan. So as many of you know, the infrastructure is starting to reach, it's probably well past its life cycle, there's a number of accessibility challenges and sort of crumbling streetscape. So it's the time to redo that and as part of this, we also looked at how Museum Square could be better utilized. Just an overview of the process, we've been kind of in and out of pandemic on this project. So when we first started, we were in a completely virtual world and had to do all our initial consultation through Zoom meetings and things like that. We were lucky enough that we kind of came out of that and were able to have some in person public meetings as well. Oh.
Yeah, and it's a very visual presentation, so.
I just noticed that now, they are working on it. We can definitely put a copy of this presentation on the website after, for anyone who's been trying to see it backwards.
We're just asking if they want to take a recess for technical. We'll take a five minutes break here and just to see if we can get this better. Okay, we're ready to proceed and you can start from the beginning, please.
Okay, we'll start from the beginning. So good app, gonna say it all again. It's gonna be just as good as the first time. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of council, those joining us virtually and in person. Hopefully, we're good to go now. I'm Andrea Sinclair. I'm a partner with MHBC Planning. I'm joined by one of our senior landscape architects, Eliza Oprah Skew, and Caitlin Hughes from MHBC is also here in the council chambers today. We've done a number of projects with the city over the years and we're very excited to be presenting you with the Streetscape Master Plan and the vision for Museum Square. Next slide, please. You can skip that one. We've introduced ourselves. The study area for this project, while it includes all of downtown Woodstock, we've really been focused primarily on Dundas Street and Museum Square. In terms of streetscape, the existing streetscape elements have kind of reached the end of their life cycle. They're starting to deteriorate and need to be replaced. We are looking or have designed a more accessible plan. And for Museum Square, that was an exciting addition to this project in terms of how that space could be better utilized. Next slide. You can go ahead to the next slide. This is just sort of what I just said. In terms of the overall process, we started in the middle of the pandemic, having to do everything virtually. Other than our initial site visit where we met with some of the steering committee members at the city. But following that, we met with a number of community groups, stakeholder groups, to talk about what they see as the challenges and what the opportunities are within the downtown, within Museum Square and along the streetscape. Our initial public meeting was held online to get some ideas about the types of things that people would want to see, especially within Museum Square. Following that, we came up with two different concepts for the museum that we presented at an in-person public meeting. And we were able to do both an afternoon and an evening session, as well as a second survey that for those who weren't able to attend in person, that allowed them to provide feedback on the initial concepts in terms of what they liked, what they didn't like. And that led us to be able to prepare the streetscape that is going to be before you today. Next slide, please. In terms of the various forms of engagement that we did, as I mentioned, there was initial site visit with the steering committee. We had a virtual public meeting. We had in-person public meetings, multiple interviews with stakeholders, two different online interviews. A lot of our presentation materials included interactive QR codes. So people could scan the codes on their phone and actually view the space three dimensionally, which was something that was really new for this project and we were excited about. We had comment cards provided. We also did, and Eliza will probably talk about this later, but meetings with various vendors that do the type of streetscape technologies that were proposing. This allowed the city's Parks Department and engineering to ask the really technical questions to make sure that all the things that we're going to propose are going to work. For example, street trees being one of the things that has struggled in the downtown and one of the things where technology has come a really long way since the last time the streetscape was done. The city was very on top of having radio advertisements, which got the word out. And there was information sharing at various community events. And some of our boards were on display at some of the festivals that occurred over the summer. Next slide. I'm gonna go through these fairly quickly. These are just some of the types of images at the first PIC, as I mentioned. The purpose of the very first meeting was just to get an idea from people of what would you like to see in the Museum Square? Is there an interest for skating? Is there an interest for play features? Is it more just gardens and passive space? So we provided a lot of visuals that allowed people to comment on what they like, what they want to see, what they don't want to see. And in terms of that first meeting and that first survey, we had about eighty-five people attend the virtual meeting, which we were happy with. Especially, it was kind of a year and a half to two years into these virtual meetings when everyone was getting really over with it. But we had a really great attendance and we had over a thousand people respond to that first survey. Sorry, you can go to the next slide. So in terms of the survey, as I said, over a thousand people responded. Six hundred or more than six hundred people actually took the time to provide really detailed written comments on what they wanted to see. And all of those results really factored into the ultimate design that we prepared. Next slide, please. So at the second PIC, taking the information we gathered from all of that initial work, we presented a preliminary streetscape design. I'm not going to spend too much time on this because we're going to go into details on the final plan later in this presentation. Next slide. So some of the aspects of the streetscape design is, as I mentioned, having ability to have trees that are going to survive, bringing benches back in, streetlights. We talked about different areas where you could have the cantonary lights, bicycle parking, and then temporary patio space and tactile surfaces where you're crossing to make it more accessible for those that are trying to cross the street and navigate the space. Next slide. In terms of Museum Square, we wanted to present two very different concepts. And we knew sort of ultimately, we would probably end up with something that's a bit of a hybrid of each. But by showing two very different concepts, we were able to get a lot of feedback on the elements of each that people liked. And that led us right to preparing our final design vision. In terms of the second survey, it was a very visual survey. Next slide, please. That allowed people to look at different areas of the Museum Square and comment on, you know, which they preferred. For, for example, the south of the museum, what did you prefer between City Hall and the existing building? What was the preferred approach there? So again, really tried to take as much of the feedback into consideration as we could in preparing final designs. Next slide. And then I'm going to pass over to Eliza to go through the master plan and the Museum Square details.
And good afternoon. I'm very excited to present this today. It's been quite a bit of engagement, as Andrea mentioned. So the final plan, as we're going to see it, is really taking a look at that engagement and at the stakeholder interviews, at the conversations that we had with various vendors and really putting that down into a solid plan that is not only beautiful, but easily maintained and easily implemented. So I think I'm, we have a couple of points that we'd like to hit when we discuss this master plan and a lot of goals that we wanted to achieve. But one of them being strengthening the existing historical characteristics of the downtown. So we really took that into consideration and I'll go through these as we actually look at the design itself. But secondly, we wanted to update and provide accessible street furnishings as well as accessibility throughout. It's important that all visitors or residents feel as welcome to move through the downtown and visit the businesses that are currently there. We also wanted to provide safe crossings and well-defined crosswalks. This goes into accessibility, but of course, as well as safety and security. Our goals also include a vegetation and the promotion of healthy vibrant trees. It's our experience from not only this engagement, but from previous streetscape studies and master plans. Vibrant street trees are key to feeling comfortable in a streetscape, as well as wanting to visit a downtown. And lastly, we wanted to provide timeless materiality. What that means is that we want to be able to maintain this as the years go by and make it maintainable for anybody that is working here for the next five, 10, 20 years. Next slide, please. So for ease of delving into this very large streetscape plan, we've divided it into west, central, and east. A lot of the, we also have focus areas, but a lot of the characteristics are similar. So we'll talk about those characteristics that are found throughout the plan. But the plan in its entirety will be posted and is available if we want to delve deeper into a particular intersection. Next slide, please. So what we see here is a couple of focus areas. The first one looks at the general characteristics of the streetscape. So what we have here is concrete sidewalks, followed by, and in following slide, this will come up a little bit bigger, but followed by furnishing zones, followed by flexible parking, and then the thoroughway. So this is common in all the different focus areas. The second focus area looks at intersection and looks at the crosswalks and how we treat that in addition to the trees that are being proposed. The third focus area looks at not just intersections, crosswalks, but mid-block crosswalks that will occur and how we treat these, how we treat any public art that is proposed as well. And then those thoroughways that connect you beyond the downtown to any existing parking lots in the back. So if we go to the next slide here, this looks more at what a pedestrian clear zone is and what we're proposing. So there's a lot going on here, but i-if we were to condense it, it's a two-meter concrete sidewalk, which we found is the most accessible for all. It's easily maintained in the future. And this two-meter mark, there's a minimum of 1.8 meter that we give here too. But this two-meter concrete sidewalk supports through travel in a way that is uninhibited. And it also supports soil cells, which we are proposing for the trees on the northern side of the street. And these would be installed and would exist underneath this sidewalk within the pedestrian clear zone. So this is intended to be a frontage for the businesses. It's intended to be easily accessible and connect users throughout the downtown in a very visually direct way, as well as mobility related. So next slide, please. What we're looking at here is the furnishing and edge zone. This is not pavers. We understand that it's quite difficult to maintain these after ten, fifteen, twenty years when they start popping out and being, replacing them is not necessarily cost effective. There's definitely other technologies out there and one of them that we're recommending here is imprinted and colored asphalt. So we want to bring the characteristics to maintain the historic value of the downtown and speak to the buildings that are currently there and will be there in the future and bring texture to the surface as well. This is not the thoroughway. It's what we're calling the furnishing and edge zone. So it's where the lights will be proposed, where the street furniture will be proposed. It's well set back from the clearway so that when somebody's sitting down, when somebody needs to access a waste receptacle or lights need to be installed, it will be within the zone. And there's space existing to have this occur. At the edge of the zone, just stick to that one. Perfect, thank you. At the edge of this furnishing and edge zone is the edge zone, which we're defining as the area where there'll be also colored asphalt, but it'll be quite contrast. Color would be quite contrasty. So that helps the visually impaired residents and visitors understand when you are moving from a pedestrian realm out onto a shared traffic. In this case, you're adjacent to the parking area. And that's separated by a rolled curb. So not a full height curb. You can still traverse it quite easily, but defined by this edge zone that has a high contrast imprint on it. So we can move on here. The flexible parking, we've gone back and forth on this. There's been opportunities or examples of this through various cities where with COVID coming around, there's been a lot of restaurants and businesses that have taken over the street and have spilled out onto the street or the sidewalk itself. So in order to organize this and to allow this to happen in a way that the business owners can dictate and spill out into their own parking spaces, we're proposing that, again, impressed in colored asphalt within this parking zone is implemented. It is on the roadside, on the bottom of that rolled curb, also defined by a flush curb adjacent to the drive aisle. It allows business owners or maybe events that come through to spill out onto the space. So whether they want parking, it's there. But if they want to propose a patio or some sort of flexible use, the space of 2.4 meters are there to spill out. This doesn't, this doesn't actually block the thoroughway that the pedestrians are still using adjacent to the building. So that still becomes quite an important aspect of this, but it is just outside of that, adjacent to the trees or adjacent to the edge zone, whatever that may be. So the next slide asks for an animation and I'm hoping we have this loaded up in this scenario. Maybe at the back. There should be a separate file with streetscape animation on that. And it will hopefully, if we can get it going, take you through what this streetscape would look like. That it made it back. Okay, okay, well, we can skip that. Okay, well, it was gonna wow everybody and we'll skip that. So that was the streetscape component. Again, it runs quite long. So those were the main characteristics that we can find throughout. At the moment, we'd also like to jump onto Museum Square because there's quite a bit of substance there that we need to get through as well. But definitely can go back and answer any questions at the end of the presentation. So what we see here is the hybrid of those results coming back from public engagement. So this was a result of option one and option two together. We've taken the pieces that were really highly valued and merged them together in a way that it's creating a really functional and successful space with elements that the residents and respondents and viewers of those public engagement sessions have responded with. So if we move one further, we've characterized the Museum Square into particular nodes and transects to easily describe what is happening in this beautiful space. So we have the cultural node just at the forefront here where we see the fountain and in front of the Woodstock Museum. We have activity transects, art walk, market streets, and we'll go through this contemplative area just south of Woodstock Museum and then the memorial walk. So this is what this graphic is showing, but we'll delve deeper in within the next slides. So the cultural node is at the front. It's street front. It's purposely retaining very direct views into the site, into the museum in and throughout. So what we see here in these images is the Historic Museum, the Historic Fountain. And we're celebrating this by proposing a four-meter concrete pathway that in the wintertime becomes an ice pathway. So it becomes with the proposal of refrigeration equipment installed and refrigeration equipment installed in a structure that's quite close by, but it would be minimal maintenance and implementation to actually get this going in the wintertime. And in the summertime, we can celebrate this as a walking path, a pathway that invites events to deploy throughout. So it becomes a loop that people can walk. If there's tents up, it can definitely be utilized, but it's an accessible way to circulate throughout the space. We're also proposing controllable jets, nothing quite significant, but something that children can play with, something that visitors can sit by and really take in that atmosphere that it creates in those hot summer months. And then in the winter, it freezes over and becomes this beautiful skating trail that in those dark winter months really will bring some activity to the square and invite families and residents and visitors to be in the downtown. Forward from the cultural, we'll go to the activity transect, which is right adjacent to it. So this activity center is adjacent to that skating trail, walking trail. It's within the same realm, but all that it's proposing here is an area, a transect, that we can concentrate activities, concentrate structures that would house the water, the skating, refrigeration equipment, and potential washroom. If that were to be implemented, would all happen within this flexible canopy. This canopy also has a stage underneath it. It's covered within that particular area so that we can house electronics and we can house lighting, speaker systems, anything that would be required for events to take place in a central area. And if we move on to, actually, sorry, I'm gonna get you to go back there because there's more to say without moving on here. So. So activity transect also takes into account a play space and a play feature. And we were, again, hoping maybe that the video will work that really kind of takes you through all these spaces and shows these play features, but definitely will be posted online as well. So activity doesn't just mean this event space or or this transect or this area where storage and washrooms occur, but it it's adjacent to an open space that people can gather around events. And right adjacent to that is the water feature and adjacent to that is a sculptural play feature. So when you come down here with your family and with your your children and any age group, really, everybody has an activity to to do within this same space. So we're not taking these uses apart, we're we're putting like uses together so that they can cohabit and intersect in really interesting ways. So we'll move on to the art walk. Thank you. And this is just adjacent to City Hall here. We are understanding that there there's flexibility and potential for City Hall to spill out into this space. So we're proposing something that we're calling an art walk. And it's an interest, really, an interesting space that creates nooks and opportunity for art to be displayed, opportunities for people to gather and come together and whether it's discuss, whether it's take meetings outside. It's really relating back to the adjacent City Hall and and bringing in some some vegetation in this location as well, plenty of seating and overhead lighting.
I would just add on that, that with the plans to potentially have a new accessible entrance to City Hall in this location, this will now, right now, it's not really being used. But if people are starting to use that as the main entrance into City Hall, then this makes that space more attractive and and more usable for a variety of of things.
And we'll skip ahead to to Market Street. So we're we're calling this Market Street for very obvious reasons. It's an area where events, tents can be deployed. The provision of water and electrical bollards are are implemented here. And there's sufficient space for emergency vehicles to to get through, that's quite important. But it is largely pedestrianized now, there's no thorough or through vehicular movement. So i- it's providing a lot more safe spaces, a lot more areas for for people to take over with events, with the infrastructure to support them in a much, much more straightforward way. So moving on, Memorial Walk, this is located on the west side of Museum, of Woodstock Museum. And it's a quiet contemplation pathway, lots of seating. The the trees that are currently adjacent to the building are proposed to be scaled back and removed so that there's a relationship between the walk you're taking, the seating nodes that you see there, and then the the historical building right adjacent to you. As we go through Memorial Walk, we'll skip ahead to the next page and and come forward to the contemplative area. So this was really an area where people are asked to gather. It's another gateway into the into the square itself. Plenty of seating, but it is quite a a quiet area as compared to the one that's the cultural node that's adjacent to Dundas. So it's an excellent area for people to spill out, bring their laptop and work outdoors because we know that's becoming more and more popular. Take a school group and gather in this area, take a library group and have a reading, a reading spot or an area just for quiet contemplation. So overall access and circulation, it's predominantly pedestrian, of course. We'll see that dash line there that is shared, so it's temporary emergency. Or if there's deliveries, this would be controlled by removable bollards. And either way, we're still reserving some parking adjacent to City Hall. So that would be open as it is now. So that's again for accessibility and and for events to come through and and set up in in Market, on Market Street. But throughout the space, we're we're seeing a lot of pathways, sinewy pathways that are intersected by by green spaces that invite pedestrians to really explore the space. And if we move forward, there was another exciting animation. And again, I guess we'll we'll wrap this, both these concepts with the design elements. These are, at the moment, suggestions only, but the important thing here is that cohesive and harmonious design elements, language should be spoken throughout. We've recommended light features and soil cells and products that I would really contribute to the overall space. But regardless of what gets deployed, i- it needs to speak the same language and become something that the that can be taken into the future and maintained quite easily.
And I think just before we wrap up, the actual master plan report itself has a number of recommendations in it. One of them being that the city should continue to explore opportunities to purchase the one remaining building between City Hall and the museum. But we've, I think, done a great job of working around that if that should never happen. But if it does ever happen in the future, obviously updating the plans from Museum Square to factor in that additional space. We're recommending that the city eventually do sort of a wayfinding and signage master plan and that any future signage through the downtown be accessible. We've met with groups that provided some great ideas on dementia-friendly signage. So all that type of information really comes down to the detail that the programming of Museum Square is going to be very critical to its success and having an event coordinator or a designated person that deals with the downtown and various events. And I'm excited to hear that the city is is making those steps towards that. And then obviously, what you're seeing today is sort of at a conceptual level. We've provided some, a lot of really technical detail. But at the end of the day, there will need to be a detailed design done in terms of what moves forward. So having a consultant retained in the future for the detailed design, which at that point will prepare much more detailed cost estimates once various aspects are selected and the city determines what they're doing and what they're not. And that all improvements in the future be done with a lens to sustainability and accessibility. Those were probably the two things that we heard the most through all of the discussions with stakeholders and the public was just make it sustainable, make it accessible. And we do have very high-level costing sort of in this presentation. So if there's questions about that, we wanted to have that information today. But of course, it's it's pretty general at this point because things can change depending on when this all happens, and hopefully it does happen. We might maybe try to show the videos, even though they'll be small on the feed. I don't know if we can at least try it on our end. If not, then that's the wrap, but we'll we'll at least see if we can make it work. And I'll maybe just do the.
Let's do both of them and maybe I'll, because if the people at home can see it, then then that that's worth it. So maybe I'll I'll walk through. All right, so to wrap it up, this is looking at the streetscape. So it's a little bit of a loop. It will be when Andrea plays it again. So what we see here is that crosswalk, there's a couple of bollards where these crosswalks occur so that it's a signal so that pedestrians know they're coming into an inter or at a crosswalk and and should be alerted. There's that edge zone that is a little bit on the edge there that you can you can see. It's a higher contrast, but what you're seeing here is that texture in the ground is that imprinted asphalt colored as well to to bring the impression of a pedestrian paving pattern, but it's truly, in fact, asphalt. And then the two-meter pedestrian clearway. So we'll see that any public art and any furnishings are within that that realm aside from that one sneaky sign that's gonna come up right here where a business has put it out. So those would all be in the furnishing zone there. And moving on to the Museum Square, which is a little bit of a fly through. We see the cultural node, we see the the ice path circling around the fountain and taking you throughout the square, an area for public art and a really open frontage to the street so that sightlines can be maintained. We're now flying over the activity transect, so a gathering space for for the stage that's just underneath that colored area. Flying over the art walk, that's right adjacent to City Hall and and Market Streets. Playground is just in the distance there, adjacent to the to the water jets. So it it can have a symbiotic relationship. And then the contemplative area and and the and the walkway that is quite quiet and and plays off each other. So we're we're circling back here, and this is where it will stop for for a look at the overall. So we could come back to this if there's any questions, but this truly shows you how they all come together.
Thank you very much. I know that was a lot of information to take in. We will make sure that the master plan, which is a pretty comprehensive document, does get posted to the website as well as the presentation and the videos. But we're happy to answer any questions today.
Thank you for your presentation, and we'll open it up for discussion, Councilor Accioni.
Thank you. Through the chair to Andrea and Eliza, Elisa? Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I gotta say, as a counselor, this has been the most exciting project recently that we've been working on. I really can't wait to see this come come together. Is there areas that the public, including myself, can go and see that you've done similar to what you're proposing here? Is there a city, a town, somewhere with, like, I'm having a tough time thinking of the pavement being colored and, you know, that that sort of thing?
Yeah, there's, I think, some of the projects that Elise has done. And for example, the skating trails, there's a few, like, Arilias just putting one in, I think, already. Okay, so there, that's one of those things that's starting to come up in a lot of municipalities. Definitely, there's visuals, and I think they're in our actual report of what that colored stamped asphalt looks like. It's, again, it's a newer thing that we're starting to see more and more. There's, I know the, a lot of the work they did at Fairway Mall in Kitchener, they did a lot of their pedestrian crossings in that stamped asphalt. That's one of the first ones I saw where I thought, oh, wait, that's what we're proposing. And you can, it still looks very much like pavers, but you can just tell when you walk on it and you really look at it up close that it doesn't allow for the weeds and things to poke through and it doesn't shift in the same way. But a lot of what we're proposing is kind of on more the cutting edge of the technologies that we're starting to see and more municipalities are looking to use because I think a lot of municipalities are in a similar situation to Woodstock where they're they're going through the same process of we've got older stuff and we need to revamp it. And what's the best way to do it to minimize maintenance and minimize accessibility issues?
Yeah, I would say that it's hard to come up with something that exactly reflects this only because we're taking in our in our thoughts that the best examples from numerous projects and bringing them together. There hasn't necessarily been one that I can think of that includes stamped asphalt with soil cells with all these things together, but they are successful successfully shown in very many projects. So we could gather a lot of precedent images and other projects and share that if that would help. But having one that shows all would be very unique to Woodstock.
If I can continue, I would really appreciate having an idea of where we could go and see certain aspects. If you've got a location and address, that would be fantastic. Thank you, thank you very much.
Councilor Tate?
Through the chair, I'm not gonna ask any detailed questions because I know this is, I just, the only question I have in your experience, how was the community engagement, the numbers? Was it low or was it, in your experience, was it high?
I I would actually say it's high. I mean, obviously, if you look at it as a percentage of the overall population, it seems low. But we're getting a lot of, especially on the virtual meeting, to get close to 90 people in especially, you know, he says that going into second year of this, we've had other projects elsewhere where you're maybe getting 30 if that. And then on the surveys as well, to get over 1,000 people responding and actually taking the time to write detailed comments, that's really high. And actually, a couple of weeks ago, we were at the joint, it was a Planning and Landscape Architecture Conference in London, and we presented this project. Brad joined us there, and we had a lot of people in the audience just saying, like, is this the model now for consultation and for public squares and other projects? Because they, from what they saw, it seemed like it was a really good engagement process. And we had the challenges, of course, of having moments where we had to do virtual. But no, I think actually the amount of engagement was really high.
So just, that was just my only concern was, I thought the numbers were high when you look at them. I know the population, but I know our staff has been really good about trying to engage the community out on sidewalk days. And obviously, this has been a major bone of contention with community, with the downtown. And I I just, I hope all those people that did become involved all talk to their neighbors because there seems to be a lot of people still don't know. But I I really like this report, I love the rink in the wintertime, the sidewalk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, and then just on that, having the city kind of as our partners in this and taking that initiative to get the ads out and put the boards of a streetscape, that that helps a lot. We haven't, that's not always the case. We've done a lot of projects where the municipality is not overly engaged in the project and don't really take an interest of whether or not people are notified. So and we did try and anytime we've mentioned people to let them know, okay, if you know anyone else that, you know, pass the word on. And but it's it's always a challenge, right? Some people, you know, you can still reach, you can't reach everyone, but it was, I think, done quite well.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilor Calvo?
Thank you, I team our lotter. I just want, just more of a comment, not a question, but I was just thinking, especially, I mean, Counselor Tate just mentioned the rink. It's unfortunate because former Counselor David Nadelin, who has passed away, that was one of the things that he always wanted to see in Museum Square was a rink. And so when I saw this trail, I thought, boy, he he would be very pleased. And I think I've seen downtown rinks in many communities, and they're very well-used and well-received during the winters, the winter months. So it's, it'd be a nice addition, and that definitely would bring people downtown.
Thank you, and and to you, Madam Chair, that if there was one thing that probably came out the most through all of the responses was have some form of skating rink. That was a resounding, everyone we talked to saying, we really hope the skating rink happens, so.
Thank you, Councilor Schadenberg.
Thanks, maybe just a comment. I like the fact that it seems to be a nice, nice mix between the future and heritage. And I know, for example, the city of Woodstock is the, I guess you can call it a facade improvement plan in the downtown where you want the businesses to sort of restore what the exterior of the building should look like versus aluminum facades and stuff like that, which are not what they should look like. So I would think that if you could envision everything sort of culminating five, 10 years from now, it would be an exceptional improvement to the downtown of Woodstock. And I know a lot of landlords are already in the process of doing improvements downtown, interest-free loans and grants and stuff that are available through the city of Woodstock. So I think combining with this, it would be an exceptional improvement to what we've got.
Absolutely.
I know in London and Kitchener, the the rinks are very well, people are there all winter, I think. So I think that's quite a quite a great idea for our downtown. So thank you for the presentation, and we'll see where we go from here.
Thank you so much.
So moving on, there's no reservation required as this item is dealt with under the department reports, item 148.2. The next is our Minnesota Code Chapter 330, fees and charges, but I have a motion on that. The Counselor Pedder. And second by Counselor Calvo.
I move that Woodstock City Council approved the fees and charges as detailed in the report and that the necessary bylaw be passed.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Counselor Schadenberg?
Thanks through your chair, I guess to Parks and Recreation, Brian Connors. I did send him an email earlier, maybe just to clarify, when when the park bench sponsorship is $2,320, I would guess that's the cost of some sort of a a label or or logo put on the on the bench, whether it be for a memorial purposes or whether it be a business sponsorship. But I just want maybe a full explanation on where that 2,320 comes from.
Your worship through to the counselor's question. The the cost breakdown for that is the bench itself costs $1,450. To put in the pad that it sits on is over $300. Then the the labor and equipment, which is the truck extra, cabanas and staff. Um, then the the labor and equipment, which is the truck extra, cabater and staff is another um, five hundred and sixty-two dollars or five hundred and uh, sixty-two, so. Um, together, that's where we get the the price and then on top of that would be um, the a hundred and fifty dollars for the plaque. So um, with the benches, we don't sub, the city doesn't subsidize uh, uh, putting those in currently.
Any other discussion? I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Did you have, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Okay.
I was actually gonna ask if um, uh, Mr. Hammond had anything to add to to this at all? If if his department was involved in this? Yeah, not in this, so, no, thank you.
I'll call the vote, all in favor? Thank you. That's passed unanimously. Uh, the next is uh, proposed extension of build commitment for two seven four eight one three three Ontario Inc. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Tate? And second by Counselor Talbot?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council direct staff to initiate, initiate amending the sales agreement with two seven four eight one three three Ontario Inc. To reflect a twelve month extension from the date of the council meeting.
Thank you. Is, are there's any discussion on that? Mr. Hammond, would you like to um, just explain this extension?
Yeah, so we've done a couple of these more recently. Um, normally when the city sells industrial land, we provide the purchaser two, two years to complete the construction of the building. Whatever size they they committed to. Usually it's a percentage of lot coverage. In this case, it would be fifteen percent lot coverage. Um, so this particular company, they they fell a little bit behind on the uh, the schedule. Some of it because of supply chain, some of it simply because of delays in uh, site plan process and things like that. Not uh, not strictly the city's fault. There's a lot of volume for staff to deal with, so site planning is taking a little bit longer than it has in the past. Um, and then uh, in this particular case, I think they did four rounds of revision, so it took just because of the nature of this one, the revisions, it took a little bit longer than normal. So that the point is, I guess, they're coming up to the end of that two-year period where technically on paper, the city could step in and repurchase the property. I don't think we would have any intention of doing that. They've they've started construction now. They've got a foundation in the ground. They've done some grading on the site. So they are now well into the construction of this building. Um, so we're looking to just kind of paper this and make it legal again, that they're in compliance with the agreement and give them some time to uh, to complete the building. The reason they're really asking for counsel for this extension on paper is because they have a potential tenant that's quite interested in it and in the course of their due diligence, they've realized that uh, the project will be out of sync with its compliance. Um, so this this tenant would feel a whole lot better uh, knowing that they're on the right side of the agreement again.
Thank you. Any, is there any, uh, Counselor Schadenberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, the fact that this is on Griffin Way, that's sort of the dead end cul-de-sac of Griffin Way, which runs south of of Devonshire, for anyone that doesn't have the uh agenda in front of them to to be able to see what exactly what piece of property are we talking about?
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's passed unanimously. The next is the request for adoption of the downtown Woodstock Street Gate Master Plan. Could I have a motion on that, please? Counselor Tate, Kate, and second by Counselor Accioni?
I'll make the motion that Woodstock City Council adopt the downtown Woodstock Street Gate Master Plan as presented and refer to budget.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Counselor Tate?
Uh, just want to, through the chair, um, thanks again to staff for all their work with this to make the public aware. And um, obviously going forward, there'll be new people on council. I hope they get their, they get up to speed on it when they're here and move forward with this.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Petter?
Uh, through the chair, I just wanna uh, mimic what Counselor Tate just said, except I'm gonna speak against the motion because I'm not sure that we should be this council only having a few weeks left should be uh, making this decision. I think it uh, rightfully belongs to the council coming in. So for that reason, I'll be voting against.
Counselor Tate?
Just through the chair, through Counselor Petters, it's just refer to budget, so we won't be making any monetary decisions, but I don't think we should be delaying it. It needs to be on the next budget, so the new incoming council can make that decision. Otherwise, you're gonna have to wait a whole another year.
Counselor Accioni?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Tate's. Uh, this has been delayed long enough. The city wants this, the city expects this, and I'm looking forward to seeing this come together and hope next council can uh put something together and get it approved and get construction started sooner than later.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Petter?
Uh, through the chair, if I could just ask David if in fact that's true, that if we did not pass this today, it would not make uh the timeline.
Acting Mayor Lauder through to Counselor Petter, um, the referred to budget is not an approval today. Um, it is a direction to staff to give consideration to including the uh, some of the phases of the project in the five-year capital budget, which is, so will be presented to the new council um, for their consideration at their very first meeting, um, uh, first regular meeting. And so it'll be something that will be put to, put in front of them. Um, and it'll be up to that council to determine what the priority is for that project. You know, council only approves the capital budget for the 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 upcoming year. The the remaining four years are simply forecast years. Council's not approving those projects. Um, so it's, it is in the council, the new council's uh, decision making to determine what priority it will give this work.
Counselor Petter?
Just as a follow-up, so just wanna make sure, so we're not handcuffing the new council coming in whatsoever. They can change anything, they can turn down anything.
Acting Mayor Lauder to Counselor Petter, that is correct. There is no uh, there is, there's no final decision with respect to this motion before you at this moment. Um, the future council will make the decision on the prioritization, the financing, um, if they wish to proceed.
Any other discussion? Uh, Counselor Schadenberg?
Maybe just a yes, a simple point or simple follow-up to what's been said already. I I firmly believe the fact that we've uh taken down the two buildings on Dundas Street that the city of Woodstock purchased that I think we we certainly have already felt in the back of our minds and I would think next council obviously makes the final decision. But I think we're already on phase three of a project of uh, improving uh, downtown Woodstock and that includes things like I mentioned before, but the CIP program to uh, improve storefronts by uh, local owners.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call the vote on that. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. Uh, uh, those opposed? Thank you. That's passed. Uh, the next is the um, Association of Ontario Road Supervisors AORS Municipal Trade Show twenty twenty-five hosted by the Oxford County Area Municipalities Road Supervisors Association. Could I have a motion on that, please? Counselor Talbot?
And thank you, I'll move that. Sorry. Whereas the Oxford County Road Supervisors Association is seeking to host the twenty twenty-five A O R S Municipal Trade Show. And whereas this event draws more than tw- two thousand participants to share information and technical developments related to municipal roads and infrastructure with two hundred plus exhibitors, over three hundred booths of public works, products and services. And whereas this event provides an opportunity to showcase the county and the local municipalities while providing support to the local economy through accommodations, meals and other related spinoffs. And whereas municipal support for the show and public work staff involved in planning, organizing and running the trade show is required for it to be successful. That Woodstock City Council hereby endorses the Oxford County Road Supervisors Association bid for the twenty twenty-five A O R S Municipal Trade Show and further endorses the utilization of public work staff to assist with planning, organizing and running the twenty twenty-five A O R S Municipal Trade Show.
Could I have a second for uh, uh, Counselor Accioni, second the motion? Is there any discussion on that? If not, I'll call. Would you like to, would you like to speak to that, Dan?
Yeah, so this is a um, through you, Acting Mayor Lauder. This is a longstanding trade show. Uh, it was, the first one was in nineteen eighty-six. And it uh, it's a great networking event. I've been on a committee in a different association uh, for the, I believe it was the twenty-ten, but I couldn't find the the date, but uh, so I've been involved in a trade show before. Um, it's, it's a great influx into the, into that uh, association for different things, so charitable donations as my, as my report indicates and um, training events for staff and it brings in a different flavor there. So it's great for the, that local um, association. It's also great for the community that it's in and it brings in a lot of um, you know, for two days and three days roughly, some economic uh, benefits there. So and it gives us uh, the public works community a great opportunity to network, see a lot of new initiatives, a lot of new equipment and the vendors, the opportunity to to uh, you know, kind of focus on it rather than knocking on the door all the time. So there's there's some benefits for both sides that way as well.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? Thank you. If not, I'll call the vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. That's passed unanimously. Uh, the next is the Legacy Fund uh, Commemoration of Florence Carlyle. Could I have a motion on that, please? Counselor Accioni, second by Counselor Schadenberg, motion please?
Yes, moved by myself. The Woodstock City Council approved the Woodstock Art Gallery Advisory Board's request to draw twenty-five thousand from the account zero one eight zero dash five two zero zero four dash zero five two five dash A R T Acquisition Reserve Fund to fund one-third of the cost of overall project to commission a public artwork to commemorate the life and work of artist Florence Carlyle, eighteen sixty-four to nineteen twenty-three.
Thank you. Uh, we have Mary Reed, our director curator in the audience. Would you like to speak to this?
Thank you very much, Acting Mayor Lauder. Um, so I guess, you know, most of COVID, I spent writing grants and now they're all coming to fruition. This is not my first time up here in the last few weeks. Uh, so this grant is coming through the Department of Canadian Heritage Building Communities Through Art and uh, and Heritage. And it's specifically to commemorate notable individuals in your community, uh, and certainly Florence Carlyle. So we made the first step in terms of the renaming of the park on the, on the west side of Van Sitter Avenue at Ingersoll. Uh, and now we're being able to develop a a second addition to our very early on, early days public art program. Uh, so the the intent is, is that we top up the initial fifty thousand dollars which we've received to do a seventy-five thousand dollar call for uh, for submissions for this commission. Um, that will be announced at our special kind of Carlyle Day on May sixth, twenty twenty-three. And then we would see the sculpture actually come to fruition either in the fall of twenty twenty-three or the spring of twenty twenty-four, depending on what is selected and the materials and the requirements that are, that are in place.
Thank you. Are there any questions through to Ms. Reed? Hearing none. Thank you. And I'll call the vote on that. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. That's passed unanimously. The next is uh, the bylaws. Uh, Counselor Tate?
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Schadenberg, that the following bylaw be giving a first and second reading. Nine five five one dash two two, a bylaw to amend City of Woodstock Municipal Code by repealing and replacing Municipal Code Chapter three thirty entitled fees and charges.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Not a call vote. All in favor? Thank you. Go ahead with the third reading, please.
Uh, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Schadenberg, that the following bylaw be giving a third and final reading, nine five five one dash two two.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. That's passed. Uh, so it's now we're down to questions and answers. I will call on Coach Slara Accioni because you're over there by yourself.
Thank you so much. Um, let me start off by saying, yes, I am wearing pink nail polish. Okay? Yeah. Uh, on uh, Monday this past week, um uh, Alante Beauty Salon launched their uh, breast cancer awareness campaign. They do a fundraiser every year. Uh, Jane Ross and I have been talking for a little while. Obviously, I I don't have the hair to dye my hair pink and we looked at a few different options. Um, we kind of came up with the idea that uh, let's try to get some awareness with it. I agreed to paint my fingernails and with, through a social media post, every single time that it's shared, I will keep it on another hour. So at this point, sometime tomorrow night, I can take it off unless, of course, everybody gets out and shares it, which is great. That's the whole point to it. Um, uh, you decide when I take this off, as simple as that. And for the record, this stuff's hard. It it chips. It's hard to keep nice and neat. Um Woodstock Navy Vets is actually doing a game on Friday night against the New Hamburg uh, Firebirds uh, for breast cancer awareness. So hopefully we'll see out there. Puck drop is seven forty-five. The um I encourage everybody to give generously. Um I I am personally doing this to donate towards Shannon Larson, uh, Team Shan. Uh, we've been helping them out for the last fifteen years. They've been uh raising funds in memory of their daughter, of course, who passed away from brands, breast cancer and I believe I believe she was twenty-four years old uh, when she passed. So it does not just affect uh the elderly, it's it's everyone. And through this, I've actually uh, um, been told by a few clients that they know men as well, so it's, it's not just women. With the Streetscape Master Plan, I already mentioned, I'm really excited with this. I encourage everybody to go online, take a look at this. I'm hoping city staff will make it somewhere nice and easy that everybody can look at it right from maybe the front page, so everybody can uh, see the the walkthroughs and everything if they haven't. Um, really, really encouraged by that. Um, it's Thanksgiving weekend. I hope everybody has a safe and healthy Thanksgiving from my family to yours. And going forward, make sure you keep your copy of what's on Woodstock Magazine. And see what's going on here in the community. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Counselor Calvo?
Thank you. I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving weekend. Um, temperatures are gonna be changing, so be prepared.
Thank you. Counselor Petter?
Yes, I would just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And I shouldn't say anymore because I've been negative all meeting. I voted no against everything. The mayor's mad at me because she can't say unanimous. So I'll let the important people speak. Thanks.
Counselor Schadenberg?
Just uh, three topics to mention. The WCI is a concert for the cure. I'm a WCI grad. Nineteen eighty-five, believe it or not. I know I look much younger now, Jerry, but nineteen eighty-five. Uh, Friday, October the seventh at seven PM. Admission is free, but obviously they wanna take donations because the proceeds are going to the V O N Sakura House. Uh, and of course, it's at Woodstock Collegiate too in the auditorium. Also wanted to mention that Indwell has what's called a Hope and Homes banquet on Friday, November the fourth. Now, Indwell's an association, of course, that run the, I guess you can just call them subsidized housing with some uh, nice little uh social working things that go along with it. And they have two locations in Woodstock, the Van Sitter and also at Blossom Park. So it's Friday, November the fourth at five PM. Tickets are are fifty dollars. In that event, a banquet's at uh, Marinatha Church, but they do fundraisers from one community to the next because Indwell certainly operates uh, um, establishments or homes or apartment buildings in various locations. And the next one's kind of a fun thing. Uh, be sure to watch ABC or Canadian Network CTV every Tuesday night at ten PM. That's for the brand new Kevin Ziegler Show, The Rookie Feds. Of course, the Kevin Ziegler started out though when he was very, very young, about eleven, twelve years old, playing basketball with a golden retriever in Air Bud. And also before that, he was in a TV show called Life with Mikey, where he was with Michael J. Fox. And I think he was only about ten or eleven years old then. But Kevin Ziegler's is now thirty-eight as the years go by. Couple of years ago, he was in a TV show called Rebel as well, but uh, that's now on ABC and CTV Tuesday at ten PM. To be sure to watch uh, Woodstock's uh Kevin Ziegler's. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you. Because it's Thanksgiving, I just wanted to make a comment about our city staff. I don't know if it's because it's that time of year, but um I hear a lot of negative stuff and I just wanna remind the public that they're the ones who do all the heavy lifting. We hear we vote on the stuff they bring forward, but they're the ones who do all the
we vote on the stuff they bring forward, but they're the ones who do all the work. They're the ones who run the city. And they seem to get a brunt of some criticisms. So just a reminder, in the last, I don't know, 15 or so years, some of the stuff that the city staff has brought forward and that we have in our community, we have a skate park, a fully accessible playground, a splash pad at South Side, refurbishing of Lions Pool. Adults and youth alike have benefited from the development of Cowan Fields and the Cowan Park Sports Block, which includes a walking park, baseball diamonds, programming for tots and seniors, baseball parks and South Side Park have been refurbished. We have lights at the walking trails, partner with the senior center. I could go on and on. So when you see our city workers, maybe thank them from, all the way from the grass cutters to the garbage to any of our management, because they do a fantastic job. And for the last four years, Patrice Hildery was our clerk and she retired during COVID, but I don't think she gets enough thanks for the financial spot that the city is in. We have added all these facilities. We maintain all these facilities. And we have very little debt. And I think it's really important to drive home to the taxpayers how important that is. So thanks to all the staff. And one final comment, I always have to say to Mary Reid. And it was funny because I was talking to some people yesterday. Once again, they didn't support the art gallery originally. And I always remind them, we are very thankful. Now we have the art gallery, we have Mary Reid and her grant writing ability and to get it to where it is today. So thank you to the staff. Thanks.
Thank you. And I do want to thank the staff. And we are so appreciative of all they do. So on the weekend, last weekend, I had the distinct honor of attending the 100th birthday celebration of Al Badger, held on Saturday at the Royal Canadian Legion. Mr. Badger served with the Royal Canadian Air Force, which he joined in 1942. Mr. Badger has attended our Remembrance Day services at the Senate Tap over the many years. I presented a certificate on behalf of the city. Just a reminder, the art gallery, they have open calls for members of the community to submit public art bike rack designs up until October the 12th. This is another grant that Ms. Reid had applied for. The call is open to all ages and abilities. The winning design will be awarded $1,000. A template for the bike racks can be found on the city's website, along with the submission guideline and design specifications. Wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and keep safe. We have so much to be thankful for here in Woodstock, Oxford County, and Ontario. When we look around at all the devastation from storms in the, in the East Coast, people still with no hydro and possibly no home to go to this weekend. So we should be very thankful for our city and what we have here. And now I'll call a motion for an adjournment. Councillor Pedder and second by Councillor Schadenberg. All in favor? Thank you.